Public comments.
Just like to wish everybody happy holidays and see you next year.
Thank you. And it goes as well, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays. We'll move on to the educational showcase tonight. We have Larry Zuckerberg. And to talk to us about Money Smart Program here in the college. And I'll have Larry. Zuckerman. I got confused with Zuckerberg. Larry, if you would, could you introduce your staff and welcome?
Certainly. Don't call them my staff. My colleagues and very close to me are your friends, but that's Dr. Mark Swing, he is our database lead. And Charlene Davis, who is our lead trainer. So I'm on Zuckerman, I don't use my first name, so I'm going with the second name. I promise to be brief because there is no. And the last time I did a similar presentation for the foundation board was the opposite. We were actually not stalling, but going into great detail while waiting for a quorum. So this is going to be, I promised the reverse of that. And my, my friends and colleagues have an instruction to give me the hook. A lot of times it might be Greg or Diana giving me the hook, but this time it'll be either Charlene or Mark as they see fit. You should have, and I believe you do, I see that you do, have two handouts. This you may have seen back in July, Dan Fogarty, our Associate Dean, who I call the Energizer Bunny Dean, because he just never runs out of energy. Put together this really very well-written press release. And you probably know that we were the recipients, along with two other colleges, of a substantial amount of money. The grant is called the Money Smart Financial Coaching Program. And we basically received like ninety-six thousand dollars for year two, ninety thousand for year one, and I believe twenty-seven thousand in year three, so over two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars of a grant that's funded by the international banking powerhouse JP Morgan Chase. And along with us, there were two other colleges that were recipients of the grant. One is Rockland County Community College, another SUNY school that you're probably all familiar with. And the second is a small, interesting school named Mott's Community College, which is actually located in Flint, Michigan. So we've all been charged with delivering financial coaching services for our students. Our school decided after some collaboration between Diana Putnam, Dan Fogarty, me and, and our team to use a different business model than the other schools. The other schools are using the traditional business model for, for most grants, which is you have someone or two people receiving the salary in charge of a grant and then administering the grant. What we're actually doing is very different. We're actually distributing the responsibility for providing the financial coaching services to our students via our teaching faculty. So we have right now ten, what we call financial coaches, they're all teachers. And we're being very successful, I'm, I'm delighted to tell you, a little surprised, but happily so. We have over thirty-four students that we're currently coaching. And in our most recent site visit, we were told by the person from Westchester County Community College, which is helping to administer this grant for JP Morgan, that they're viewing us as leaders and they're very happy with our results. So we were quite proud of that, particularly because Westchester County Community College, as you may know, has currently over twenty thousand students. They used to be at probably twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand, that's what their college president told me. And we have, of course, much fewer than that. Yet our metrics are not scaled. So for us to be in effect competing or being held to the same measurement metric as a school maybe twenty times larger is quite a challenge and Rockland is also larger than us, so we're really holding our own very well. So our team consists of, in addition to Mark and Charlene, Dan Fogarty, who I mentioned. And I'll ask Dr. Chuck Miller to advance the slide. So we, Mark and I actually, Charlene wasn't able to go, but we started this little journey into our grant in July of this past summer where we went down to Westchester County Community College. These are the people here from Mott Community College in Flint, Michigan. And the other people that you see are from Rockland County Community College and some people here from Westchester County Community College. I had to, of course, wear my Wall Street Club shirt, you know, that's just me. And in the middle, we're quite proud of it, is the JP Morgan Chase. They probably had about twenty people there for that event. And one of my unofficial goals, it's not a metric, but just one of my goals, is I want to see if I can get FMCC mentioned, okay, in the annual report of JP Morgan, which would be transmitted all over the world. We do have a really good quote, they are dedicating millions of dollars more coming in future years to allowing community colleges to offer these services. So that is one of my goals. Next, please, Dr. Chuck Miller. And I suppose I found out what my real job title is. I can't remember, I'm really bad with that stuff. Am I program leader, grant administrator? I don't know, but what I really did best just the other day is I delivered pizza to this group. So we had a, we had, I was very happy to see that, because I like pizza and I'm on this stupid diet and I can't eat pizza anymore. And I've lost like twenty-five pounds in a couple of months, some of you may have overheard me talking about I'm on a weight loss drug that is really effective. In any event, so I delivered pizza to this group and this was about fourteen people. These are the students and some of our coaches. We've involved a lot of different teaching faculty at our school. So we have, for example, Rad Tech is doing financial coaching. We have a LEC Tech that is doing financial coaching. In, in addition to the business department, in addition to people in humanities, criminal justice. So a really broad reach to inform the students of the services that we offer. Charlene is actually going to show you the actual substance in three to five minutes of what she and I created together for the students. Diana Putnam, I thought was very instrumental along with Dan Fogarty in putting this together with us as a not-for-credit course that we could offer to the students via our new SUNY learning platform called Bright Space. Okay, next, please. We did go to Portland. Nobody wants to go to Portland in the fall, but we went, all three of us, to Portland in the fall. I had never been to Portland before. I'll say it's a beautiful city, very much challenged, I must tell you, very much challenged by serious problems of homelessness, mental illness, and open drug addiction use with needles on the streets. And my understanding is, you know, this great country of ours, we face some challenges. They're not the only city dealing with that, but we did witness it firsthand. So that picture that we just missed, we're just had, we're going back to it. That was actually from, oh, that was actually from Portland, Oregon, in, in October. And next slide here. Very excellent, Greg.
Yeah, just one second.
Okay, no problem. I'm just trying to keep it on.
I know. You can, you can blame Jennifer for being late, because I had to switch back over, okay.
So this quote from the executive director of Global Philanthropy from JP Morgan Chase is wrong, but it's accurate. It talks about the challenges that community college students face. One of the things that we learned, which is really interesting, the single biggest barrier, not only for our community college, but pretty much all of them, for students not completing is not academics. It's the lack of financial wherewithal. And a good portion of that, a good portion of that actually can be substantially alleviated with basic financial literacy training, which we have been engaged with over thirty students. And it's a diverse, diversity is of course a key word today in all of education. Well, there's no greater example of diversity than this financial training program. We have students that don't have a checking account, that are first opening a checking account, first establishing their credit scores, their parents are paying their bills, okay, adult students. And I recently spoke to a student whose goal is, and he's going to achieve it, to graduate not only debt-free, he's a little bit older, but with a six-figure stock portfolio. So, you know, the needs of the students receiving the financial coaching is really diverse. So that's why I'm hoping that we can be successful with our program. I had a conversation recently with Diana, she doesn't realize how much I've been thinking about it, but one of the things she said was when we get this program established, we'll be able to bring it out to the community. And that will really not only change the way the community views us, which is what she said, but I'll even add on to that, that will make us so much more important. Because I actually think the business model of the community college is changing and has to change. And the way I see it is not only are we going to be providing educational services, but community services. And I think this will be a really good springboard for that. I've been meaning to tell you, I wanted to talk to you more about that, so surprise. Uh. Yep. Perfect. I told Mark to say that. So, and I think we're done, anyway. I think we're done. We'll skip this. Yeah, we'll skip this. Okay, this was all from the FAM Financial Technology Center, which dovetails great with what we're doing. It was expertly used. I read the, the grant proposal that Diana and the grants writer wrote. And they made really, really good, excellent integrated use of the FAM Center. Any objective observer would say that that helped us get the grant. So that's why I had that in there. And I think that should be it. Yep, Charlene, you're up. Mark, good timing.
Thanks, everyone. So what Charlie and I did, we decided that probably the best way to to help our coaches understand what was expected of them and our students to understand more about the money and how it worked and what works with it, is to set a creative course. So we actually created some non-credit course, nobody has to do anything, they can do what they want, but it also, it helps the, the coaches go through if they're questioning something that they might want to talk to a student about. And the students have access to this after they meet with the coach once. We don't sign them up, and so the athletes meet with the coach once. Because I don't want them to get scared and see a class and say, oh, my gosh, I have another class, this is a class I have to do work because they don't have to do work. This is simply a resource for them. So what we did is take the outcomes of the brand, of the grant, what things they wanted us to accomplish, and we created little modules about each of them. So you can go for the next. So what we did is these modules have things like starting off with a budget, how, what is a budget? When you go into the module, you'll see things like actually a budget, a sheet that they can create a budget, the coach can go over with them what a budget is, ask them some questions, help them create a budget for themselves. Plus, each of these modules has a video or two. It has, it has a PowerPoint presentation leading them through answering questions. So we created, we didn't create the videos, although we have a goal to create videos this spring. We got the videos from other sources, which, but it was kind of, it was kind of time-consuming because we had to make sure they agreed with what we wanted to see, so we had to watch all those videos. Probably would have been easier to do them ourselves. And after that, we're talking about, you know, if our, each student is different, and if each student that comes with us, some might have a checking account, some might not have a checking account. Some might have a checking account but not a savings account. So we work through that as we go. And starting a relationship with a bank, if they don't have any, how can they start? Right? What are the ideas of that? We talked to them about the importance of saving. So if you do have a checking account, now can you save? How can you, how can you cut back on some of your expenses? You know, like maybe not go to Starbucks five times a week. And so, and so something like that, because you'd be surprised, one of my students spends about fifty dollars a week at Burger King. And so we talked about that. And so, and she's starting to save. So it's really, they worked on it. She's starting to save and, you know, she started saving twenty dollars a week, but that's okay. That's what we wanted them to do. And then we asked them about their credit, you know, establishing credit. Do they have credit? Some of them have credit. Do they understand what their credit score is? So we go through that with them as well. And you can go to the next slide. And so here, after we go through all those modules with them and even helping them establish credit, if they're ready for that, not everyone is ready for that. Again, we try to have this broad enough where it could help any student in any way, but make sure that we're only guiding them to what they can handle at that time. So once, obviously, they get everything together, we want them to understand identity back, because if they have it, they get credit, or they start this to be aware, right? So that's, that's just awareness. How to help them set their own personal financial goals. We go through with them, you know, what is your goal? We actually sit down, we talk to them about that. What do you want to accomplish? Well, I want to buy a new truck, or I want to pay my school, you know, I want to pay my school off, I want to, whatever it is, you know. It's, we're not, we're not telling them what their goal has to be, but they, we can work with them to establish that. And then talking about benefits of a financial, working with a financial coach. Here, when we find articles, this is like a work in progress, so if we see some articles, current articles, we're posting them in there for the students and for the professors as well, the coaches as well. This was our, just our recorded training, so that if a coach, a new coach is coming on and they didn't attend the training, of course, we'll meet with them individually, but they can watch our training. And then this is just our data base. We'll turn it over to Mark to talk about that.
One more slide, please. So this heard about the training, the bright space, and now we're talking about the backend, which is the data. So to keep the grant, we need to track the money, we need to track the success of the program. So first of all, we promoted the program, we included the coaches, we have, we have an active project. We're hoping to get more, we have other people interested, so the program's only started. We have thirty-four students in the database, and our goal was to have thirty. We're doing extremely well, compared to other colleges in the lead-up, whether we get other lead-up colleges in the program. And then each session, we use this database to record the results. We start the session, we have a baseline. Each time we meet, the baseline can stay the same, but hopefully it changes to meet twelve major metrics, not to be confused with twelve modules of training. So these are just some of the metrics that we have to meet or that are being interested in being measured. We are one of the lead-up colleges, there's only four of us, in the initial ones, so this may change, so things do adapt and change. But we sit down and we ask about financial goals. You know, hey, I would like to get a savings account, I'd like to get a checking account, I'd like to get a credit score. These are the things we can track of, and you'll notice, I just highlighted a few, and here are the green ones. On the ground is the credit score. The credit score drives a lot. A lot of people in the United States are under banks. They're not going to get credit scores. So we talk about that. How many students don't have credit scores? We're going to track it. How can we get them the first time? Do we get the first credit score, then we try and move it a little bit? If they already have it, then we try and move it forward. It seems maybe basic to many people listening in this room, but trust me, it's not many of our students, or many of the United States population that we're researching. There goes. Once again, we were given these metrics, we've been given this database, and we're using it to be able to sustain this grant. And then after the next two to three years, make it something you can launch, continue in this college, tie perfectly with our business finance program, but for the community and being part of our college, so. Next, great. So nobody, you care about this, but this is the database we've been given, and these are the kind of things that we have to ask. You know, what's the source of debt? We have credit card, we get loans. All these things help the student feel more comfortable about talking about finance. We talk about mental health, we talk about physical health, but a big part of this balance is having this financial power. And sitting down with a student, you can see the relief on their face when somebody wants to listen and talk to me, but maybe not a guardian or a parent or someone I don't really know. So it's definitely successful and helpful, even just in the early stages of, we'll be going through some of them. So that metrics is a required measure, so. And then we just create all these metrics on the backend, I'm helping with the database reporting. And as I would call this like a beta, we're definitely trying to make it better, because we are one of the biggest schools trying to say, maybe this metric doesn't make sense, maybe this does make sense. So every time we're going back and meeting with the organizers to try and improve as we go along, and things are changing ever since the summer, since Larry and I first met, now with Charlene, we've definitely made changes along the way, and we're definitely a lead part of that, even though we're upstate, former government community college, but it definitely made an impact, a difference, thanks to these guys and Dan and Diane, so I think one more slide, maybe. But we, we couldn't do this without people in the community college, like the idea to use this and not just have one or two people. Other colleges have, you know, used that model, and it may work for them, and to be honest, sometimes it's a struggle for students just to go to people they don't really know. But if I'm in a classroom, I say, hey, anybody interested in financial coaching? I just talked, you know, talked about personal finance in a lesson or lecture. And then we gave them some options and they could pick a coach, we could randomly assign coaches, because obviously we don't want to make them feel like they have to come to me if they see me every day, or Larry or Charlene. So these people here, John Armstrong, Colin Bailey, Sandra Barkovich, Paula Graham Weisler, obviously Charlene, Billy, Billy I, Pauline Lebat, Nathaniel Somerville, myself, Roger Young, and Larry Zuckerman, and there's more lined up for the next semester. That's what makes this brilliant, is because it's, you know, we're just taking a small bunch of two or three students, and it's going to make it more sustainable forward, so. I think these guys have done a great job, everyone's done a great job. Does anyone have any questions? It's not starting, so.
Please, can I?
Yeah, no, for credit.
Yes. I think you stick to the student.
No, that's free, it's totally free. The grant pays for it, so we don't charge.
And then the student.
Yeah.
Not any for us. Yeah. Why do you somebody come outside that I wanted?
Currently, we're not allowed to expend rent money for anybody that happens to be students. However, one of the things we venture to do with is to create a sustainable business model in the future. And I do have ideas, and I'm sure other people do as well, so we might be able to keep the program going, perhaps. One of my favorite people has advanced even a bit. Might want to talk to me about some things, but we do have some plans. Some great questions.
They want to think about approaching places like our hospital to add to EDP projects too. So it's a couple of dollars a month per person per month. Coming out of EDP, we valuable tool that provides.
That's a great idea, Jeff, I'm glad I thought of it.
Yeah, are you ever going to have non-facultary as coaches?
No, in fact, everything's a possibility at this stage, so you are.
We, we evaluated that for the kickoff, which is really a three-year time period. We've decided that would be most effective having teachers that have reached into the classroom and that are already experienced teaching and teach it. Also picking up on Ty Bay's question, we do have four credit courses, as I think you're well aware, in both personal finance and investments. So this also can be a feeder into those courses where, of course, then the college does generate revenue.
And people from outside, they can come in, it's not.
Correct. Or our own students that maybe weren't going to take those courses, maybe a Rad Tech student might want to take, for example, a personal finance course, or an LEC tech student might choose to study investments. That's part of the synergies that we're developing as well.
Do you know how much they're going to charge for credit, you said? For credit, like that.
Well, that would be them just taking and paying for a standard course like they've already won. Would be regular four credit course set or regular billing rate. Sure.
It would be, you talked about, a little bit about expanding it into the community. One of the things that would be beneficial would be in to the, all the high schools. And people graduated from high school, I know myself, you know, when I graduated, I had to set up my own bank account and and checking account and stuff, and things you don't think about as a young man or a young lady. Very beneficial.
You're really right. I hadn't brought up that point, because I actually wanted to say, didn't have to say it. There are fifteen states in the country that already mandated financial literacy training at a school level. Interestingly enough, Florida is one of them, and New York is not, which I found very interesting. So there is a need for it, and also the three of us were conversing before, they're teaching personal finance, financial literacy. I wrote an article about it, and some of you I think saw it in the year, a few years ago, they're teaching it in Harvard. Okay, so it's not just young students or people that are, you know, less privileged economically, it's throughout our whole society. You'd be surprised, you know, I'm a CPA, you know, I have a practice. Do you know how many affluent people I've talked to that ask me questions? It blows me away every year. What is an IRA? Very wealthy people employing many, many people in our area, in their fifties. Okay, what is an IRA? So it goes, the need for this goes beyond what we're doing right here.
Absolutely. It should be, it should be a mandate.
I, I so passionately agree with you.
And one of the, one of the students I coached, he works two days a week full-time and comes to school three days a week. And he was asking just about an IRA, you know, IRA, sadly, we're talking for him to start saving for his retirement. Because he's not old enough where he works to participate. So, you know, so it was great, so he had no idea, of course, we could talk about it. I don't want to take up any more time. We're passionate about it, really, the family, you know, love what we're doing. Working with the students is remarkable. They are so interested. They, you don't even have to coax them to come back. They're ready to come back to the next meeting. And sometimes like I'll say, oh, you know, it's finals week, do you have time? And they go, yeah. I had somebody at two o'clock yesterday, Tom and Tom, so it's, it's really.
You'll see a student that they're having trouble keeping their attention with a simulating course, like something I teach, like accounting and depreciation, that can't sit still with excitement because they put mint on their mobile phone, and now they have a budget in real time. And they're using that to control their purchases. I, I talked to a student that had eight hundred dollars in a brokerage account, spread among six hundred stocks. Yeah, it's offered a quarter in each one of the stocks. We, we talked to him about, maybe you're over the very supply. So, so to liquidate his positions in Robinhood and buy some sensible diverse things like the Vanguard total stock index, et cetera.
I think we have one more question from Roberta.
I just wanted to pass on my appreciation for what you're doing. I think it's such a necessary educational focus. And I, I, you know, from my background, my husband's as well, means a lot to us, and it's so powerful for students at this age, as young as we can get them started. It's such a, a game changer for them. So thank you for all your efforts.
And, and thanks back to Bill for giving a brilliant lecture on mutual funds to my investment class, students loved it.
Jennifer has something to say?
You're on mute, Chen.
Yeah, I'm mute.
Keeps changing.
You're back on mute. Never mind. Well.
Hey, you mentioned diversity there. There's socially, socially responsible funds that are getting a bit of traction lately over the past few years. They're not as responsible as you might think. Sometimes they market them as that, but that's the interesting area too.
It's also good to realize it's not a financial consultant, it's financial coaching, which is very different when I'm engaged by the store. And so sometimes I think, you know, at a very ancient level, like you should do well, and you should do well. But I do have a really, you know, sustainable store.
Well, being that it's snowing out, we're going to move on.
Well, thank you, Larry, Charlotte, I'm out. Move on to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November seventeenth meeting, if I have a motion to approve those minutes. Motion by Jim, seconded by Greg. Any corrections, additions to the minutes?
By who?
Jeff.
If not. Yeah. Losing it.
You're fine.
If not, marking to accept. All was a favor?
Aye.
Post, hearing none. Motion passes. Move on to the chairman's report and the chairman's report. The only thing that we have is, we got to have a decision by next month of who's going to head for the board, the labor relations negotiations. We need two people. In the past, it's always been the financial person and the policy, or the, yeah. The personnel person. I know we discussed in the last meeting about possibly having other people involved. So by next meeting, think about it, and we'll make a decision then. Because they've already submitted a proposal, the base, as I believe, right?
Both FACE and ESP have submitted their letters of intent to negotiate, and they expect CSEA any day.
Okay. So we need, other than that, have nothing else for the chairman's report, and move on to the president's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few items. We, we do have a new chancellor, the, the SUNY board appointed John King, who's a, a former U.S. Secretary of Education and former commissioner of who's a former U.S. Secretary of Education and former Commissioner of Education for New York State. He will be joining the system in a couple of weeks. And one of the first things they're going to set up for him, as they often do with new chancellors, is a sixty-four campus visit, visiting tour, listening tour. So at some point, we expect to announce that he'll be on our campus and certainly we'll let all you know when that, when that's going to be. Last month, we had the opportunity to honor our, some of our athletes and athletic teams. One of the young, young people that you met last month, Madeline Avery, who was a standout for our volleyball team, was named All-American. And as far as we know, this is the first time this has happened for a student athlete on our campus, certainly in the last quarter century or so. So we're very proud of Madeline and her accomplishments and we wish her the best as she moves on. She's not graduating in December, but when she moves on to, to great things. One of our faculty members had some exciting news. Jason Radlin, who is, who is many of you know, is, is an assistant professor in our theater and entertainment technology program, was successfully selected to be on Jeopardy. And his, his episode will air on Tuesday of next week, so on channel ten at seven thirty. Tune in to watch Jason as he begins his Jeopardy journey. Last weekend, we hosted the Coaches versus Cancer classic tournament here on campus. That tournament resulted in over seven thousand dollars in donations being over seven thousand, a little over seven thousand dollars, that is seventy-two and change, something like that, that's being donated to the American Cancer Society. So it was a nice event and good turnout and happy to, to be the host for that. Our advocacy efforts have kicked off for the state budget, our NICAP. We have our own team. And as I think those of you who are, who are dialed into the NYCCT listserv know, we've hired a lobbyist, NYCCT and NICAP have collaborated on that. And they have started arranging meetings with, with legislators. Yesterday, they met with Senator Stavisky, who's the Chair of the Senate Higher Education Committee. My understanding is that was a very successful meeting. The lobbyist has elevated our efforts, if you will, and, and is providing some good focus. And so we hope that that will help bear fruit as they begin their deliberations on what the state budget's going to look like. And that concludes my report for this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, President Tucker Miller, and we'll move on now to the college senate report with Evan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so we actually, unfortunately, we're gonna have snow tonight, so we might try to make this brief. But our recent meeting was actually, we had a lot of business going on, especially with that of relations to clubs and finances. So I'm just gonna kind of glance over that a little bit because it was pretty lengthy, that meeting. So first, the first thing we talked about was a motion for support of abortion medication on campus. And I'll just be pretty brief with that. We discussed it and there's a lot of support for that. But we are going to revisit it and do a formal voting spring twenty twenty-three, maybe that. Then our main events that we talked about for about almost an hour and a half was the MISA yearly trip funding request. So for those who do not know, MISA is kind of like the representative club for the Rad Tech program. And what they usually do and what they had informed us is that every year they take approximately twenty senior students, only senior students. This year was an exception. They had eighteen seniors and two freshmen that were coming with them. And what they do is they go to Arizona for, like the national conference that is like, just like a two-day conference where they stay. And they just discuss innovations and advancement in Rad Tech. As a lot of us know, Rad Tech is advancing not only at our school, but in the world as well. So this is a very important event for them and that is something I was able to understand as they told us about how they plan for it and what they do. So in totality, it's about twenty thousand dollars for them to go to this conference every year. For rollover funds at the start of the year, they received thirty-five hundred dollars out of the total student senate fund, which is by far the most that any club gets. Second would be about twelve hundred, which is what my organization, Student Nurse Association receives. So and the reason for that is because of this conference and also because they by far fundraised the most money. The total fundraising amount for the fall semester was close to eleven thousand dollars. And the MISA, the MISA club covered about eight thousand of that. So they really, really worked hard for this. So as soon as I kind of heard how much work they put in and how much money they made just over the basis of three months, I was all for their proposal. So the proposal was, we had made close to eleven thousand dollars, we're asking for eight thousand out of the student senate fund, which was approximately forty-seven thousand dollars. So of course, there's some skepticism at first because this would be almost twenty percent of the entire budget. But I was a supporter right off of the bat because they have raised over eighty percent of our total funds in the student senate this year. So they're requesting this money because they said, number one, participation is sometimes hard to get because of tough scheduling, because everything is so airtight with the Rad Tech program. And also the pandemic also always has people skeptical. But one thing that I did notice, as we've talked about before, meetings before, is that our Rad Tech program is one of our most successfully growing programs in popularity. And we're also seeing a huge increase in volume, especially this year. And I think that being able to represent a program that is flourishing so well at our college is really important. And since they have shown that they have the means and the effort necessary to do this, it's important that we help them out the best we can with the money that we can allocate.
Yes, this is the, this is the trip where they also compete on a national scale, right?
Yeah, to do our competitions as well.
And have won at least once or maybe several times.
More than once.
I believe they placed in the top, first year, top eight, second year, top six. So we're experiencing great success from, at first a small program, but now a program that's growing in size exponentially. So it's a good point for adding that. I appreciate that. So that was another reason when they discussed how successful we are at this huge national, world, nationwide conference. It certainly is. And the dedication that the small group of students and the instructors have put in, I just think really speaks volumes about where the program's going and what it could do for the the overall success of the program and what it will look like for FMCC and surrounding community members. So for about an hour and a half, we kind of just went back and forth. Really, like, you know, there's a lot of folks that we were discussing with. There was five of us at Quorum that really discussed this in depth. And they wanted to, a lot of the folks that we talked about, they would say, let's do fifty-five hundred, let's do six thousand. I was on board with eight thousand. I thought it was reasonable because they had raised so much independently. So what we ended up coming to in agreement after asking more questions about how meals would be covered, if there were any fees for the students, and what fundraisers they planned on doing, and also how they were planning on getting the money in the future. Because one thing that I can confirm, or we did confirm with them, is that it just would not be sustainable to give them this amount of money every year. That's something we wouldn't be able to do. But I do understand that because of the association with the pandemic, that it kind of made things a little bit harder for them. So we officially approved a seventy-five hundred dollar allocation to this fund for visa. So that brings us to around forty thousand dollars for the student senate fund. We've only spent around fifteen hundred of that because it was around fifty grand when we started. So I, we had figured that it would not, to give them the money, especially when they had raised over eighty cents. So seventy-five hundred dollars were allocated. And that we just had a specific stipulation, which is going to be a standing stipulation for all clubs. And that stipulation is in the future, and requests for funding for any sort of events. It's just, we have to see that they, that the requesting organization raises approximately eighty to eighty-five percent of the donation money that they're, that they need. So basically, the stipulation for here is that they had about sixty percent of what they needed for the total amount. So they would need to have maybe about four or five thousand dollars more in the future if they were to ask again. So we don't have to allocate eight thousand again. So it was approved, the motion to approve was by our EOP representative and seconded by myself. And that was the bulk of that. Then we also talked about the amp flow movement. I'm not sure if anyone's heard of the amp flow movement, but it has to do with placing dispensaries in female and gender neutral bathrooms that just gives people free access to female hygiene products. And we feel that it's very important that we are able to do that for folks around campus. And there was overwhelming amount of support by the attend, the attending audience and also the, those that run Quorum as well. So our overall plan to do this is we are going to just have one hundred percent biodegradable tampons, cotton tampons and pads that are going to be placed in those bathrooms. And they are going to be just accessible for anybody who needs them. And that is going to cost about two hundred dollars each to mount that dispenser to a wall in a bathroom. It's two hundred dollars each and we're going to do about four. So it would be close to a thousand, which is not something we were worried about. Tampons themselves are about a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a five hundred count case. And also a hundred and five, a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a five hundred count case for pads. That was, there was overwhelming approval around that motion and we will be discussing it further, just about where the best locations would be for those four. Then we just kind of did a brief overview on club activities and then we did fill our remaining positions for the next year because our December graduates had closed their, their time with us this, this past meeting. Club budgets were, are going to be revised for the next meeting after we allocated those, that seventy-five hundred dollars. And then we just kind of briefly overviewed what our plans are moving forward, representation and increasing volume of people for the future meeting. So it was a very, very tough heavy meeting. There was a lot of things that were discussed. And I also did relay how appreciative I was of the way that board trustees honor our distinguished athletes. Everybody did a great job. And as a student myself, who is part of the athletic programs at FMCC, I thought it was fantastic. And some of the students who I do know personally, Madeline Avery is actually in the nursing program, I believe. I did talk to her briefly and they all thought it was overwhelming positive response. And I do appreciate that. And that will conclude my report. But before I do end it, I just do want to say that this is the end of my third semester, but also my first semester with all of you. And I do want to just give the biggest thank you for the great welcome and encouraging me to kind of get out there and tell you what I have to say and also the opportunities at the board. And also the Full Mount College Association has really kind of given me, especially at that at that thing that we did, Distinguished Alumni Awards. That was, I still am blown away that I was given that opportunity. So I thank everybody for that.
Well, Evan, we enjoy your reports. You're precise and interesting and informative and the board appreciates that. Sure. Are there any other questions for Evan? If not, we'll move on to trustee Ghazi with the foundation report.
Good evening. Because I don't have on my report, you say, I believe I give a review of the annual AP and letter. And they sent it out early December and foundation would appreciate that immensely. And they would like everybody in our board as well as the foundation board for this participation. And this year, this is the second year that Tuesday, giving from the foundation attended and it was successful. The second item I have on my is I know I want to, on behalf of foundation, I want to thank everybody that they attend the fifteenth annual alumni award dinner, as well as the second annual award for Clock Tower Award. And normally this event is not for fundraising, but because we had a lot of wonderful raffle items, they earned five thousand dollars. And their, their item on my is the foundation start fundraising for the athletic field, especially for the multiple use, which is yes. And as I made, as I mentioned before, as I put it the month before, the estimated cost is five million dollars. Foundation need to raise money for two point five million dollars. And I get in the our packet, there's a list of naming opportunity and you can, you know, you can relate to that. And for that, you know, you already, our, our call and gave us twenty thousand dollars. And that's a good start. You know, we are very happy and thanks to our call. Regarding the gallery, gallery opening, what is going to be it is, it will, it is going to be tomorrow night, but due to the snow storm, they are postponing it for December nineteenth. And is they going to open it, but they're not going to have any reception. The reception is going to be for concluding day, which is the twenty-seventh of January. And the artist, I don't know, is very renowned, bridges and media, he's working, he's drawing and painting. And the sample of it is here. It's beautiful. And yeah, I give you the date for foundation twenty-ninth of tournament is going to take place for twenty fifth of May in twenty twenty-three. And the location is Fox Run. And I'm sure you're going to get later on, of course, a pamphlet or sponsorship and et cetera. The other item is the recent communication we in Hattie, she's our solar farm. It didn't go through because of the sign of the project, it was, the cost was prohibitive. And I don't think so we are going to go along with it. And they couldn't backburner and, but we don't think coming back to the table. And is now it's up to foundation to decide what they want to do and whether they have another project or not. And with that, I conclude my report, Mr. Chair. If there is no question to ask, if I cannot tell you, there's always Mrs. Lancy and Dr. Trapp.
Well, I do want, I want to thank Roberta Winstone. She was very instrumental in us getting the twenty thousand dollars from our Cal Poly. She was the woman there. So, yeah.
And just to, just to follow up on the Hakati situation. So, so they have a five-year option on the land during year three. They haven't pulled the plug on it yet. But as, as Ty Bay said, they've, they've put the project on the back burner once they got the cost for the interconnect to the grid. And so we're anticipating that they're gonna walk away, but, but we, but that's not official yet. And they, they had talked with Leslie and I some time ago about a different sized project, but but again, we're, we're not optimistic that they're gonna move forward. Yeah. They are, they are. It's, it's escalated, it escalated five thousand a year. So right now we're at fifteen thousand. By the time we're done, they'll be at twenty-five.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I was surprised too because I'm aware of some other projects in, in the local area where they are moving forward because the, the incentives that are out there from Nicerta were bigger than they anticipated. So.
There's so much on sixty-seven already, surprising capacity, isn't there?
Oh, yeah. All, all we know is what they told us. We don't, there could be something else going on, but, but that's, that's their official reason for, for, for not moving forward at this time.
I did, I have communicated with them. We're supposed to have a phone call after the first of the year. Campbell is his name, but yeah, like we used to, we had a baby, so like, you know, and this wife, we've been very busy. So I've been writing to him all the time. So maybe, so I'll, I'll report back. So I'll I'll report back after the first.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to committee reports. Finanz committee with uh trustee Winstman.
Thank you. One moment.
Yeah, you're on.
The regular expense graphs are included in your packet. The graphs compare the data for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The expense summary budget versus actual for the period of nine, one to eleven thirty, twenty-two. Which is twenty-five percent of our fiscal year. To date, our actual expenses and encumbrances are twenty-three percent of our budget. The expense detail report by department. Provides by department a detailed comparison of our expenses and encumbrances to budget for the period of nine, one to eleven thirty, twenty-two, again, twenty-five percent of our fiscal year. The finance statement for the period of nine, one to ten thirty-one, twenty-two, which is seventeen percent of our fiscal year. Um the revenue includes billing activity through ten thirty-one for the fall of twenty, the twenty twenty-two semester. This represents fifty-six point eight percent of our tuition budget, while expenses incurred represent two months or twelve point three percent of budget. The budget transfer report and contract reports are included in the packet. For this month, there are no grants reported. And there is a motion for the board to approve the budget transfers. There's two budget transfer requests for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. The transfers are needed to cover expenses related to student aides and maintenance repairs. Those are included in the packet as well. Bring those up quickly.
You have two motions, correct? Or motion?
Hold on.
Okay, we have a motion before the board for bus uh transfers.
The Board of Trustees approves all budget transfers between budgetary departments that exceed five thousand dollars and all transfers that affect full-time salary accounts. The budget transfers for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three arise primarily from the need to redistribute budget funding to cover expenses which were incurred. Related to student aides and maintenance repairs. The recommendation, the president recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget transfers. Listed on the um page in your packet. There is, um, there are two transfers between admissions and face full-time salaries for three thousand. And institutional research transfer to other part-time salaries for fifteen thousand. And buildings and grounds to sewage plant maintenance and repairs for fifteen thousand.
Okay, promotion. We have a second. Second, by Joe Solomon, trustee Solomon. All those in favor?
I.
Motion passed.
That concludes my report unless there's any questions. Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, trustee Winstman. And we'll move on to buildings and grounds with trustee Landry.
Just a few things you wanna um make note of in your written building grouse reporting your packet. Uh the twenty twenty-three capital projects have been completed. And all local and SUNY approvals. The SUNY Office of Capital Facilities has submitted our. Project requests to the New York State Division of Budget as part of the capital request for the twenty twenty-three state budget. We also like to report to you that the expenditures related to the water main break. Have been submitted to our insurance company. The expenditures debate along with a quote with a concrete replacement. That will take place in spring. Total eighty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars in savings. Uh those are the only notation besides the written uh items that are already listed in your report. So that will conclude our report unless there's any greater questions.
We have no questions. Um. Move on to um. Academic affairs with trustee Gardella.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to begin by uh offering an apology for not only the lateness, uh but of all the teams I would not want to respect. It certainly was the presenters this evening. I updated Zoom as soon as I got on and updated it, so it took me off to Never Neverland. And uh then the mute, the unmute would not work, which Diana has fixed. So thank you, Diana. And hopefully we'll get through this. So we're gonna start with a motion. For to approve the revision of technical technology AAS that's in your packet. And um as usual, these are following requirements of the State Education Department. Changes and additions that are specific are in your packet. They reflect some required. Uh uh credits to bring in line with the SUNY sixty-four credit requirements. And some course configurations and sequencing. As usual, the program and course level changes were discussed with the program advisory councils. So the president recommends. That the Board of Trustees approve the proposed revisions of the electrical technology AAS program. Following action by the Board of Trustees. The program changes will be forwarded to SUD and the New York State Education Department, and that is in the form of a motion.
Thank you. I have a motion by trustee Gardelli. I have a second by trustee Ghazi. All those in favor? I oppose. Hearing none, the motion pass.
Okay, just up highlights from the academic side of the house. Uh on November seventeenth, a major showcase uh occurred at the Allen House. And that was organized by Christie Davis. There were eighty employers here on campus. Um and agencies and they were exchanging employment issues that they have and solutions to them. Um the agencies talked about being slammed with certain requirements, how they could work with private sector. Um they, there was a panel of questions that were submitted ahead of time. By the employers and the agencies and Christie Davis and John Goldtore, who was FM so. FMS Work Solutions Disability Coordinated facilitated that discussion with Christie. Uh it was a rich discussion as Diana Putton um reported among all of those present and they had a chance at lunch to continue networking. And there were also displays and information from each of those uh groups that are individual group that was there to present. So we thank. Christie and all those involved in bringing that very important showcase to the college and to the community. Uh also, there uh is an interesting development that two partners of. Saint Mary's and Nathan Latour made partners in uh taking a look at the phlebotomy offerings, which we know. Community-wide are very necessary. There are need for more phlebotomists. And so the college working with part of its uh emergency tech, emerging technology grant. Um submitted and has monies to purchase of. In per simulation software. Equipment and other kinds of supplies that are needed for uh a two-course. Uh. Program that will be offered by the college, which will enable students by taking the coursework here. To uh have some of the simulation that will get them into the hospital. And reduce the uh the amount of time that the hospital will have to spend on all of that kind of training. So it's a good collaboration. Um also, Phyllis Rosenberg is the RN and CNA coordinator and floor trustful let's go. Have been working to facilitate new changes in the curriculum. Uh. Also, uh. The. Uh Mark Swain, I just wanted to give a shout out to him too because in in terms of the leadership of the three that presented tonight. Uh Mark, most recently, was the first faculty member, I understand, to have a focus group with his students. In terms of a marketing course and they were looking at some of the new marketing. Uh information that has been developed and for the college, as you know, and they have been making some comments. So as usual, we have a a lot of innovation going on from people in that department as well. And then on Saint Mary's. Uh onsite, the mental health program has come up with some interesting ways to. Video the uh instructors so that they could uh. See one another and uh they've developed many ways to talk to the clients there. About different offerings that they have uh to help them assist their progress. So uh that concludes my report. For this evening unless you have any questions. And again, I apologize for the technical delay.
Any questions for trustee Gardelli? If not, thank you, trustee Gardelli. We'll move on to student affairs with trustee Salma.
Thank you. And thank you, Jim. Well, that's important. Just some of the highlight. For winter twenty twenty-three, that has involved fifty-five students. I remember ten full-time equipment students. For spring twenty twenty-three, eight hundred and twenty students. That represents six hundred and twenty-five point two seven full-time equipment students. FMCC's first criminal justice day was held on November tenth. The admissions office posted its first criminal justice day. Working collaboratively with criminal justice assistant professor John Armstrong. Admissions counselor Liam Barber, a senior dean for student recruitment and admissions for our support. Develop the agenda and plan. The audience was criminal justice high school students from HF FM Boses and Schaeferi Boses. Resulting in fifty-five students attending. The keynote speaker was assistant professor John Armstrong. The agenda consisted of interactive careers and criminal justice workshops, including self-defense. A K nine unit and police equipment. Women in criminal justice, forensics, FBI. District attorney, probation, local, private department, and New York State troopers. In athletics, the first season of the FMCC Esports Rocket League team. Is now completing. The team finished with a respectable fourth place and the group stage. Final match of the season was a really tight series of games, the last game going into overtime. The team finished off the season, the three-one win and an overall record of four wins and three losses. The inaugural season brought about a lot of learning and how things are planned relative. To an esports team and the coach is looking forward to having a strong season in the spring tournament. Players in the fall season were Trevor Lehrer, Emmett Fresh. Daniel Lastrow and Cayman Lewis Matthews. International partnerships. FM celebrated International Education Week twenty twenty-two, November fourteenth to the eighteenth. International Education Week is an opportunity to celebrate the benefits of international education and exchange worldwide. This joint initiative of the US Department of State. And the US Department of Education is part of the efforts promote a program that prepares Americans from global environment and attract future leaders from abroad. To study, learn, and exchange experiences. Here at FMCC, we have some fun events planned, co-sponsored by the Student Activities Board and the Students of the World Club. In addition to multinational music and the quad. FM hosted an international game day at noon on Wednesday and Thursday of that week. It was also a special live virtual event with internationals, musical hip-hop artists in the theater during comment hour on Thursday. The two famous Bengali hip-hop artists joined us live via Zoom along with the founder of the organization, American Voices, Yes Academy. Youth excellence on stage. Thirty-five FMCC students attended the event in person, got to spend some quality time. With artists Black Dang, a featured artist on Netflix Movies Extraction. Students of the World Club members were also featured on social media, holding their national plaques. Every year during International Education Week, enrollment statistics in the previous fall are announced. We are pleased to say. The FMCC still stayed in the top ten of the capital district colleges. And universities for international students enrollment for fall twenty-one. Amazing. Awesome. According to the NAFSA economic calculation tool. International students enrolled at FMCC contribute one point one million dollars. To the economy last year, supporting five jobs throughout their spending in higher education and overall living costs. Costs including transportation, housing, food, and health insurance. And that um includes my.
Thank you, trustee Salamak. Are there any questions? If not. We'll move on to uh diversity, equality, and inclusion with Professor Vin Bel. Bligo, okay. I'm terrible at names.
All right. All right, let's see. Oh, we did um International Rights Day, Dream and Rights Day on December. Uh and you know, big peace club, sustainability club, had a bit of a day, we'll give out fruits and uh. Okay, so I counted a little bit because we've also put together a quarter day calendar. This is our eighth one and we wanted to change this year to. Set apart different months and identify, we did this last year, but we're expanding a bit more. Uh Black History Month, Women's History Month. Native American in the age of sixty months. Native American heritage month with Native Serendos month. This gave time. We'll get that one in here. Uh what we do is we have students to uh offer um some inspirational books that we put in it. Extra credit, uh we give them sometimes too, you know, hopefully that's their faculty too. So each morning you can open a calendar and see something that's inspirational and gets you to do a little bit of thinking. Uh hopefully, I would have bought some, but we gave most of them away and now they're drying in my office because we print them out, cut them. Blew them and uh you know, we go from there. So I'll bring them next time. Uh the intro to a nice job, had that beautiful Native American heritage month display I mentioned last time in here. That was up, it's down now. Uh you talked about Rodney Spencer, International Education Week, some of the nice work that's been done there. We haven't been up to the second quarter library. It's really impressive. I mean, it's there's a sensory room, this still a lounge. Finally, you know, for people who've been here for a long, long time. So I think it's really a developing a nice sense of community up there. That's really positive to see. Uh let's see, oh, um diversity, equity, inclusion council, can you look at some of the literature I gave them that's really focused on. What's termed online communication, a sense of how we treat each other on a day-to-day basis. And this goes across the board and addresses things like uh classes and also too. Uh this pairs with emotional intelligence, which is really important for students to understand when they get out of here, they have an understanding of um. Diversity and you know, if you get along with people. You're gonna, you're gonna do better in the world. And you know, my goal was to have students come out of here and. Get into an interview and have people say, how, geez, they're pretty good at this, actually connecting with people. How did they learn that? FMCC and uh hopefully we'll develop a re- uh reputation for that here too. Uh I don't know if I mentioned last time, but I'm participating in some interviews at another place for people. And um for head of operations of like uh retail and grocery co-op. And we've had like five people come in and when they've asked them what the EBI was, I was saying I want to do it. Saying I want to do with diversity, equity, and inclusion was. Uh so we talked about it a lot, but uh I think we're ahead of the curve. We're addressing this, which is gonna be important. We're just. Uh the eco site class, and you know, we usually try and do a meal each year where you bring in something, but with COVID, we're a little antsy about this. But um so I bought it some stuff, plant-based, not vegan, because the vegan makes people think you're. You know, a little out there. So it's into uh plant-based at this point and. Check is that there's the Better World Shopping Guide is online. So everything you consume before you eat it, you have to check out where it comes from. And they also rate people on human rights, how they treat their employees. Whether or not they're sustainable. So it's a really nice way to take a look at consuming in a way that sustains your health, the health of the planet. And also for those that are interested in animal rights too. It's a nice experience. I'd like to expand that a little bit further here. To uh a lot of fun fact is eighty percent of the world's population is within sixty miles of the shoreline. Uh looking at about two billion people being displaced by the turn of the century is uh disturbing to say the least. Uh let's see, let's see again. Oh, yeah, I listed a number of a calendar of events which we're developing, so we'll have it every year. First one's incorrect, November, it's November twenty-fifth, October twenty-fifth was International Day for women. Uh against women. You know, International Human Rights Day, Migrant Day, uh it could be in soon. This is Soul Steve, Youth and Prisoners, Pop Flonda, and Boxing Day and that. So, you know, I think we're gonna start to get some of. Annual programs going on here since we, well, it's on the back at this point. If you have a day that you would like to uh. Let's pace in the head. Yeah, that's for me.
Thank you, Professor. The name I just. I will move on to accreditation with uh Dr. Slater.
Thank you. Um good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. Um. I just have a brief report for the evening uh to speak a little bit more about the two um middle states event. Places. The first will be a front full event, which includes the tri-chairs. Uh so that's myself. Dan Town and Scott will be holding that with our liaison from Middle States, Dr. Bush and Pat. Um it will be to talk about our self-study design. What are the priorities that we're thinking about focusing on as an institution? As we go through the self-study, the strategic plan is going to be a really important piece. Of our self-study design, those four goals um. Will come into play because that's how we want to take a look at our uh self-study and. will come into play because that's how we want to take a look at our uh self-study and look at our institution through the lenses of those goals. So that will take place towards the end of January, beginning of February. Then later in the spring, uh Dr. Hawk will come to our campus and meet with the steering committee that we've identified. Um and you'll find their report. Um also, they'll meet with the Board of Trustees and anyone else on campus that they feel really needs to understand um our key will, um meet with the groups of folks that need to understand what the subsidy process is all about. He's here to help, he's here to clarify, answer any questions, um those types of things. So those two events will be coming up this spring. Um we did have a college assembly where Frank introduced that we will be calling for volunteers for our working rooms, as we traditionally do through the self-study process. Um so that will be coming up in the spring as well. It's a brief report on the accreditation. Um I did attend the middle states conference, the first one in person since two thousand nineteen. Now we port out on that. Okay, any questions?
Like school was talking about from.
He's out in the Buffalo area, the western uh New York area.
He's in New York.
Thank you. We'll move on to uh policy or personnel, excuse me, personnel. Um Carol White, senior account clerk, has submitted a letter retirement effective January fifth, twenty twenty-three. Carol joined FMCC June of twenty ten and has worked in our finance department handling payroll processing for the last twelve years. Vacancy searches continue. Uh step, C-step director, full-time and grant-funded, senior account clerk, uh finance and payroll full-time, and recruitment coordinator, communication specialist for a time. And that concludes personnel report. Uh if there's no questions, we'll move on to policy with trustee Perry.
Okay, as you saw in your packet, we have a group thing uh for policy. The first one uh is a motion to re-attend the policy thirty-three hundred student housing. Uh this stems from uh the finalization of the sale of the campus view student housing on the twenty-third, fourth of October uh that ran through this policy. Obviously, so recommendation uh president recommends the student housing policy. It's a very brief review sent in by the Board of Trustees.
I have a motion, I do have a second, second by uh trustee Beck. All those in favor? Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Second, uh policy is a policy to revise, a motion to revise policy thirty-four hundred student use of drugs and alcohol. This also stems from the sale of the campus view student housing. Uh since the FCA and the longer policy housing revisions to the current policy thirty-four hundred are necessary. There's like that change. So uh the president recommends that student use of drugs and alcohol policy thirty-four hundred be revised by the Board of Trustees and have attached um in your packet that the revision should be to that.
I have a motion. Uh do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Gazi. All those in favor? Opposed, hearing none, motion passed.
And uh our final um our final motion uh is to a revision of the naming policy uh seventy ninety. Um as uh we talked tonight, um the, this stems from the turf fields being added. Um so we need additional naming opportunities um for this area. So the recommendation uh is to um the naming policy seventy ninety be revised by the Board of Trustees as attached.
I have a motion by trustee Perry. Do I have a second? Second by uh trustee Salamak. All those in favor? Opposed, hearing none? Motion passed.
And that's all I have for policy.
Thank you, trustee Perry. We have any other business discussed before the board tonight? Yes, trustee Gazi.
I just. Wish everybody is gonna have the know-it-all. We can see all. And then.
Thank you, trustee Gazi. Um we have, uh, we don't have any executive session business tonight. So I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Motion by trustee Gazi and second by. Second by trustee Beck, all those in favor?
Hi.